He is.
Carolyn.
Ken Lauterbach.
Here.
Brian Rock.
Here.
Eileen Davis.
Here.
Monty Quinlan.
Here.
Randall Brains.
Maurya.
Here.
Scott Duncan.
Here.
Dennis Saltz.
Here.
So we have four of them. Consent agenda consists of two items, the approval of today's agenda and the approval minutes from the last meeting on June 28th. And a motion for the acceptance of the consent agenda.
So move.
Move by Mr. Duncan.
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Thank you. So beginning with the regular agenda item of demolition ordinance.
Okay, so this is a demolition ordinance. It's modeled after what Walla Walla has in their codes for historic structures. And this came about through the Historic Preservation Commission. They have concerns that it's too straightforward to issue demolition permits for structures that might have historical significance. So what this would do, so they asked me to do some research and we looked at what City of Walla Walla has and some other communities. And this is pretty typical of communities that have historic preservation commissions and historic preservation laws. So what this does is that when staff would receive an application, it would allow us to determine the age of it. And if it was older than, if it was 50 years or older, we could contact the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, DAP, and also see if it's on any registered list for historic places, check to see whether it was on the city's list. And within that 30 days, if we receive any feedback or make a determination that it might be of some historical significance, then the city can then place an additional 60-day hold on the application. That would allow staff to reach out to other interested parties, possibly developers that may be interested in historic structures, any local interest groups that might be interested in the structure, to see if there's either, you know, a way to preserve it and reuse it through other means, or the possibility of relocating it. You know, that's why you see a lot of the structures in Walla Walla where like on the Whitman campus where they'll, you know, be building a new facility for the school. And a lot of those buildings, they're older than 50 years and they'll find a reuse for them if they can. So if there is additional input received, if there is an interested party, then the city is authorized to hold a public hearing on it and then they can place, after the public hearing, the city could then place an additional one-year stay for the structure. And if, at the end of that period, if there's no reuse or purchase and sale that doesn't come about for repurposing of it, then the city staff would be authorized to issue a demolition permit. At any point in that process, if it's determined that there's, you know, no historical significance, then staff would be able to issue the demolition permit. Are there any questions on the process or the ordinance itself?
Do you have any data that indicates how many structures over 50-year-old is in our town?
I would say probably 80%, maybe. It could be higher than that. But again, we have, there are a lot of structures that it wouldn't require much evaluation by staff or to determine that it's just, you know, yeah, it may be 100 years old, but it never had a foundation and it doesn't have any of the historical or architectural features to it that make it worth preserving. Abraham Lincoln wasn't born in it, or, you know, I mean, those are other reasons why you might want to preserve a structure. If there was somebody that had, of historical significance, may have been, you know, lived there, was born there, you know, things of that nature. But I don't think we really have any scenarios like that that I'm aware of from listening to our Historic Preservation Commission talk about the history of College Place. And I think we go back that far, so.
I think the only one that I'm aware of is the poorhouse building that's over by Walmart that's being left to rot.
Yep.
So that was actually the reason I asked is because 50 years seems to be fairly new, to be honest with you. And you're going, you're saying this is a historical structure that's only 50 years old. And in my opinion, I think you need to knock that back a minimum of 10 years and maybe we'll go back to 75 years. This town's been here a long time.
In order to be eligible to be placed on a list of historic properties, you have to be at least 60 years old. That's the, that's the way, so I think it would be, you know, prudent to bump it back, but, you know, another 10 years if that was the desire. The Poor Farm is one of the reasons why the Historic Preservation Commission wants to, wants an ordinance like this on the books. We've already had a historic structure be, de, it wasn't demolished, it was deconstructed. The Poor Farm Barn, which is in, was in the country states, and that was last summer. And I say deconstructed because there is some unknown plan to reconstruct that apparently somewhere in the county, hopefully. We were told that it was bought by a winery, but we were not provided with any additional details on that. But there, you know, it was sad to see that go down. It's hopeful that it'll be repurposed somewhere else in the county and we hope that someday that happens. And the Historic Preservation Commission, if that does happen, would like to get that structure wherever it gets relocated to on a list and also have a plaque to honor that it was part of the Poor Farm operation. That barn is over 100 years old, I believe. I don't know exactly, but.
I know the lady who grew up in that house, and the house she's currently living in is the house that used to be the nursing center for it. So her house is 100 years old as well, but she remembers the house as being very old when she lived in it. So I don't know about the true age of it, but I'm sure it was born built before 1900.
So what is the, if this commission wants to recommend they hire first old, older people off-line, what would be the process for that? Are we being asked to approve this to council?
So the next step would be to receive feedback, so that would, you know, be considered feedback. And if it's the consensus, then I would make that change. If it's not the consensus, then I would hold off on making that change until we hold the public hearing and see what the feedback is from the public. And that's also an option, just to leave it where it's at and wait until we receive feedback. And then you could make that recommendation at the hearing to modify the language. And so your recommendation at that point, whatever it may be, could be to not move forward or something. We would take that recommendation to council and they would make the final decision.
When was knob and tube, tube wiring?
I would have to look at that, but I believe it was either in the 30s or the early 40s when it was totally done away with. Most houses that I'm aware of built in the 50s were no longer knob and tube.
And.
I would have to do research on that.
Pipes, lead pipes.
Yeah, those didn't stop until probably mid 60s, maybe even early 70s.
Not a lot of lead pipes in our communities, but we have a lot of galvanized pipes in older homes. To kind of, mid-century modern homes are now eligible, most of them, depending on exactly when they're built. That's the 60-year range. So when you think of architecture in the past, you know, 60 years, so ranch-style homes, the atomic, you know, kind of modern look is the type of architecture that is now eligible for preservation.
Oh, that's way, yeah. That's like putting meal away.
We better hold on to that.
If you were eligible for demolition, wouldn't you want to stay for at least 30 days?
I think, I think maybe even 75 years.
Well, I agree. I think 75 years is more apt, more applicable. And honestly, I just sold a house, well, not just, it's been four or five months ago. It was built in 1888, just down on Sixth Street, and whichever direction it is. And the house is actually in pretty good shape. So, you know, the guy who bought it has remodeled most of it and is just going to rent it out. So that was built in 1888, so, you know, let's.
Well, we've heard from Robert Davis himself, let's hear from some others.
I have one question, John. If we're looking at the ordinance, the last item C is accessory structures exempt. In the case of discussing the Poor Farm, we had the house and the barn. Would the barn have been considered accessory?
Generally, when I look at an accessory structure, we factor in the size of it. So in our, the way our code's written, accessory structures, I think it's under 600 square feet, I want to say. Could be less than that. Could be four or six, I can't remember exactly. But that is a good point. And that could be a point of contention with the property owner. So you could eliminate that. In fact, I think that would be a good idea to probably eliminate that.
Yeah, there's a lot of garages in this community that were purposely built for Model As, Model Ts cars. And the size shows. They're not usable for today, but they're really cool old structures.
Can park your lawn in there?
Yeah, you can park your lawn in there.
So if we remove that last sentence, then it would just be age-related, not purpose? Kind of like an idea of, I mean, accessory structures exempt. I don't want to shed, I'm sure the, definitely have to, it's.
Yeah, I understand that.
Perhaps we could put a threshold in there of size? So if it's, if it's a significant structure but may still be accessory, then we would have an opportunity to consider. Okay.
I agree.
What are we going to do about, people tend to let their sheds fall apart.
Well, there is another ordinance that we're looking into. And I put a call out to other communities that have historic preservation ordinances and they call them demolition by neglect ordinances. So it would be an ordinance that would, in most cases, they allow, if it's, if a property owner is found to be neglecting a structure that is actually on a list of historic properties, they're neglecting the maintenance of it in order to remove it, demolish it, then the city could then take action and to put preventative measures, you know, make sure it has a good roof, things of that nature. I don't know that there's many communities in Washington State that have gone that far. I think it's probably, it's more something that you'll see back east and that, in fact, one of the ordinances that we were referred to is from Jonesboro, Pennsylvania or Tennessee? Pennsylvania? Tennessee? Thank you. And, you know, communities that are, you know, as old as the Constitution and, you know, and then property values are through the roof and, you know, there are economic reasons why somebody might go that route. And there's reasons to preserve those structures. So I'm not sure that that is something that is palatable to our community, but we'll see our Historic Preservation Commission's interested in it. If we can come up with some good language, we'll probably be bringing that to you as well.
I've seen sheds that have a rough sway like this, and shingles are all off and you can see through it. There's no purpose, except that was granddad's. So we are a town, we're not the county.
Some of that comes under our nuisance, you know, abatement. We don't have a property maintenance ordinance. So other than making sure that, you know, weeds are not super tall and the property's not filled with a bunch of junk cars, we don't have the ability to go in to tell somebody that they need to maintain or, you know, improve their building, so.
Are you able to condemn a building?
The city council, if they determine that is dangerous, then there, we could go through that process. It's a condemnation process that, you know.
Would you be very able to do that, at least with the council?
Yeah. You have to show a public need and necessity if there's danger and. But the councils, again, you have, you have a lot of thresholds you have to meet in order to do something like that. We came very close to doing something like that 15 years ago, the Blue House that was on the, for the long time, Scott, you probably remember. And I think it was right before my time and I recall that the council was very close to taking action, but then I think a private property owner came in and purchased it and demoed it, if I'm correct. Scott, come on, pull it up.
There were some statements about that being historical too because of the possibility that somebody had stayed there. I think you're right, it was purchased and it was demoed.
So I'm assuming that most properties are not going to be historical, definitely most sheds are not going to be historical. But I guess I have a concern, and I don't know if there's a good inventory or if there's anybody doing the inventory, to really realize which ones might be, especially, I mean, actually the touch checks with this idea that if one is falling down and the property owner goes somewhere to demolish it, it might be a nice or whatever, and all of a sudden it's actually a historical. And I guess, you know, the idea that then the city can require that, okay, now you have to fix it up, it could be a burden for the property owner to do that for the economic part. So, you know, sort of like one of these things where when the city steps in to tell somebody that they need to do something to their property, I'm starting thinking, okay, I own a house, most likely it's somebody that's new in that old house that may not have the needs. Let's start having some good service.
Well, this ordinance would not tell anybody they had to fix up their property. And in terms, to answer your question about a list of historic properties in the community, we just received a grant from DAP, the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, to create a list. We will be hiring a firm to come in and evaluate the properties that are 60 years or older and come up with a list for us. And then the next step would be that the city would approach those property owners. So the inventory not only comes up with a list, but they look at the architectural style, they list all the features on it that are still intact. They may do some research if there's some indication that, you know, a historical figure was associated with the property. And then that report, it would be, is then sent to the property owner and they're asked to participate in the Historic Preservation Registry and get it on the list. But it's voluntary. So at some point, we will have a list. Generally speaking, you're not, unless it's a known structure like the barn, the Poor Farm Barn, we're not looking, they won't be looking at accessory structures. Now, if they, if there's a historical structure, they will, they will probably, they will look at the accessory buildings on it to see if there's, you know, a carriage house or something that is still in good condition and, you know, was built in the same time period. And they'll, they'll mention that and provide that information. But in most cases, you're probably not going to find that if somebody wants to tear down their single car or Model A garage to put up a new, you know, new garage, it's, I mean, I wouldn't envision that it's going to stop somebody from doing that. And, you know, again, this is modeled directly off of what Walla Walla's done and they have way more historic structures in their community and, and homes are torn down or relocated all the time. You know, it happens. I mean, just because something is 100 years old, as I said earlier, but it's sitting in the dirt and, you know, has vinyl siding on it and seven layers of roofing, it doesn't mean that it's worth, you know, restoring. So, any other comments?
Well, Walla Walla has some really fabulous homes. And just offhand, I can't think of any that are outstanding in College Place. There probably is. But in general, I don't think there's very many that would fit within this framework.
We have, there are a number of craftsman-style homes that would qualify in terms of age and there's a number of them on College Avenue. And despite your feelings towards the architectural style of mid-century modern, that period, there are some homes that meet that requirement, that criteria as well. And it's a, you know, it's a matter of taste, but despite your taste, those are architectural periods that are being recognized and do need preservation. There are a lot.
Well, the ones on College Avenue have been kept up very nice.
Doesn't this in response to somebody that's requesting a demolition? I mean, they're coming to the city saying, we want to demo this, give us permission to do so?
No. We do not have any requests right now for demolition. If we did, we would have to process them under our current, you know, we don't have any real process. We just make sure that they are, you know, removing asbestos, lead paint, pipes, that sort of stuff, and if they're disposing it out of landfill, and that they have, you know, proper trip permits if they need to and that kind of stuff. But beyond that, there's, so for the, a typical demolition permit, it takes about two to three weeks to get through our governmental processes. So in terms of having a couple of extra weeks to evaluate the structure, contact DAP, it's really, that first step is not putting much additional burden on the process in terms of lengthening in it. And in most cases, I'm sure we're probably going to find that it's, you know, it's not a structure that's worth going the next step. But it could be, so.
But my point is it's initiated by the property owner.
The demolition application is initiated by the property owner, yes. I'm sorry, I thought you were asking if we had a pending application right now.
No.
Okay.
The idea is it's initiated by the property owner, that he wants to do a demolition.
Yes. Sorry.
And so this is just enhancing that saying, well, it's historical, let's look at it.
Correct. I would strongly recommend if you are considering changing the age range, that you stick within, within what the guidelines are for, to be eligible for a historic property, which is the 60 years. Just for consistency.
I think I would propose for our commission to change this ordinance to 60 years to 50 or less. We better remind the requirements of the historic preservation.
I'd second the proposal.
Any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
I guess my other thought before we vote on that is the accessory structures, to have clarification on what it was. Do we need to separate those or do we have to bring them together?
I think, I think separating them and waiting for the open forum to actually happen, the public, the public meeting, in case somebody, somebody has a better idea about that and that.
Okay, so we have a motion to second to change the length of time for 60 years. Let's vote on that.
We have, we have one motion on the floor, so you're gonna need the motion?
No, I'm not gonna need a motion.
You're gonna need to vote the first motion.
We are voting on changing the length of time, 50 years to 60 years, considering historic damage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Six one, is it that right? Did they vote right? Okay, five one, finish.
So Brian, you abstained.
Brian abstained. Mr. Duncan, you're in. Okay, I will have, I will make a motion that we clarify the definition of the accessory structures by, let's see, eight square foot.
Yeah, I would recommend if we do that, we match it to what our accessory structure size is in our code, which I, it's between 400 and 600. Walla Walla has one and we have another, and I always get it too mixed up. My apologies.
If it's 400 or 600 below that, is considered the accessory structure?
If it's in that, if it's under one of those, it's considered an accessory structure.
Okay. So I will make a motion that we match the definition of the accessory structure in this demolition of historic structures ordinance to match what is our city of College Place definition of an accessory structure. Sitting, and by Mr. Gross. Through the discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Do we have any opinions? Okay. Seven zero on that. All right, we're ready to move on to the development regulations.
So I don't, you know, I'm not going to go through that list item by item, but there, that's between myself, Mike Rosatello, and Greg Dorn, we've been kind of keeping a list of, you know, your guys' thoughts towards code revisions and, and staffs. So that's, that's the list we're going to focus on. Greg's working on, he would have been here tonight, but he, he's in Seattle having some doctor's visits for his back injury, so, but he's working on the draft code changes. So hopefully in August, we'll have a draft to present to you, not for public, but just to get out to the planning commission and start talking in depth about each one of these items. We'll work through it. Not super slow, but we'll take as much time as we need to. So I would ask over the next couple of weeks for you guys to kind of take a look at this a couple of times and see if there's anything missing. Send me an email if you feel like we've left something out and we can add it to the list. There's a lot there. A lot of work to be done. Some of it is, you know, pretty cookie cutter stuff that, you know, we should be able to bust out and not have a lot of discussion about. But certainly the PUDs are going to be a big discussion. Accessory structures, you know, the, for like accessory dwelling units, probably going to be a good discussion. You know, our open space requirement in the PUDs. You know, affordable housing's an issue. Impact fees, that'll be an interesting discussion. Quite a few things on there. So, yeah, Scott?
I have a question on the proposed, calls university district. And you're saying that plus other educational facilities. I'm wondering if you broadened it out rather than just focus on university as to education because you're, you're talking about both areas.
What was the last part of that, Scott?
Instead of calling it a university district, call it some kind of educational type thing.
That's, that's an option. I think when we went through the comp plan process and.
You're looking at the university.
Right.
But you're going to apply it also to the educational schools.
So the K through 12, you know, whether it's public or private, there's usually, you know, different activities that go on, you know, between, from a university to those lower level of education. And so we wanted to have a special zoning district that will talk about the allowed uses within that. Because you have housing that goes on within those, you have, you know, you have food, you might have student, you know, student union, you know, sort of activities, a lot of different university-related activities.
Yeah, but it's, I'm reading the language. It says it's a guide to the development of institutions such as universities and schools. So you're not confining it to the university of your, including schools, is all that I'm saying. It's broader than the university.
Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't have the text in front of me.
It's number two.
Number two?
I'm wondering though if they are really meaning that it's two different sections because it says establish a standard for the new university district zone and add provisions for the approval of master plan and guidance development. Are we actually talking two different things there?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the master plans, I mean, we, we should have a process that allows for approval of various different types of master plans. You could have a hospital that locates in your community and they want to have a master plan because they have, you know, big campuses. So it should be broad enough to cover anybody that wants to have a master campus sort of thing. Okay.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the language and wondering if we've been broadening it. Since you're looking at other institutions.
I see what he's saying and, and, you know, you have the purple zone university district and then is it a separate zone for other schools and institutions? I think that's really where he's coming from because he's right. If you're only, if you're going to use purple as a designation for all those areas, then it shouldn't be called the university district. It should be called the education district zone.
Education or institution or something?
Yeah, or something. But, you know, if you're, if you're doing one specific zone color and area just for the university and one more for other institutions, then it makes sense what you're, what you're putting down.
I think the intention is to have just a university district just for the.
Just for the university.
Yeah.
I think it's a little misleading here, number two, so it probably should be broken out into two and, I guess, two ways. We already have a three.
Okay.
But I actually do think that it is two different things there.
Okay. I can clarify that.
I have a question on number nine, merging the R7 zone district and the R60 zone district. Can you tell me what that's about?
Well, we've, we have, it was discussed at planning commission through the comp plan process when we were looking at our zoning maps. And so we, through our analysis of looking at the different various uses based on the state codes for single family versus duplex or triplex and those things, we found that in our R75 zones, which is supposed to be strictly single family, no basement apartments, no, nothing above the garage, that sort of stuff, we have found that they're, those, those zone, we have those zoning districts, but those, the actual uses in those zones more reflect the R60 zones where you have basement apartments. You know, so it's not strictly single family. So the proposal is to eliminate the R75 zone and just have everything R60, which is residential, but you can have up to two units. And the other, the other logic behind that is as we look at accessory dwelling units, which again, in a lot of these zones, that's what these basement apartments, apartments could be classified as, they're accessory to the main use and, and that's kind of what goes on in our community. And so why have a code that says you can't do that when it's already going on? Why have zoning that says that's wrong when it's already happening in pretty much every neighborhood? So that's the logic behind that.
So you know, I guess considering that I would mention that there is, well, it happens with your current R75. I guess, I don't know how to word it, but I have a concern that when we make these changes and what it could open up in the future. And so I've seen some tensions in the past where a small change gets done, so then things start to happen. So let's say that the neighborhood's R75 and somebody has a big lot and somebody now ends up, okay, well now I can build another house in my backyard to do a flat屋. And if you start doing it a lot, all of a sudden you start, you know, neighbors start complaining about, okay, now I'm changing the character of my neighborhood. And so I don't know, I mean, just something to throw out there to kind of keep in the back of the mind as to, you know, I don't know what the consequences are, but there could be some consequences and some, you know, some, some of the residents in some of these neighborhoods would not want to make the changes because you may unleash some things that they don't want to see.
I mean, that's a good point. I, I think a lot of our, so Highland Park is a neighborhood that's R75. The lots and the way they're configured, they're not suitable for further subdivision. But doesn't mean that the code change would, I mean, that would allow those neighborhoods, they would change, I mean, and change isn't always bad. I think it, it will be important for us to have codes for like accessory dwelling units that restrict placement of windows so that you don't have, you know, a, an apartment above a garage that has windows looking into somebody else, neighbor's private backyard, things like that. So I think there are things that we can do to both allow for the neighborhoods to change or for more change to happen in the neighborhood, maybe there's some illegal stuff that's happened in the past. And allow for more affordable housing, allow opportunities for retired people to stay in their homes for longer because they, you know, have additional income or they have, you know, a student that's kind of helping them take the trash out on Mondays and those sort of things. I think there are a lot of other benefits. But there is definitely, there can be fear out there that this is going to change the, the, the neighborhood. The other side of it too is in another mountain view, scenic view, that neighborhood, it's R60, or excuse me, it's R75, but it is littered with basement apartments or even garages that have been converted at some point into apartments. And past attempts to change that to R75 were defeated because there were a few people in the neighborhood that were concerned that it's going to change the character of the neighborhood, but in reality, what you have is absentee landlords that are not willing to invest in their properties because they're invested, they're, if their structure is destroyed, they would not be able to rebuild that apartment. They can only rebuild the house. And so there's some theory that it's kind of a broken window sort of thing, you know, it's there, they're allowed to use it, but there's not a lot of incentive to improve it because it could be for naught if it's destroyed, so.
I feel like our society is changing. And our little elderly people that have had college students in the past are dying off and these homes are becoming rentals. They're not owned by people. And this R75 could, if you don't keep that, I know that there's a lot of homes being used as R60. But I think things are going to change and if we don't keep the R75, these homes are going to become two and three family homes. And is that what we want? Do we not want ownership in the homes?
Well, the, the R60 zone only allows for, for two units. So it wouldn't, it shouldn't become three, four units.
Is it, am I wrong in, in understanding this too, that in the R60 zoning, or actually in the R75 zoning, you're only allowed a certain amount of physical structures on the square footage of the lot to encumber the actual ground space? So it's not like you could have a 2,000 square foot house and put another 1,000 square foot of house in the backyard because that's already breaking the code and you would never allow that to happen.
Yeah, you have maximum lot coverages that you have to comply with. And when we get into the nuts and bolts of like the accessory dwelling units, I would also advocate for keeping it at two units. So if you already have a, a house with a basement apartment, you already have your accessory dwelling unit. You can't build a garage and put an apartment in, you know, above it in the backyard.
But are they going to be two rentals?
Well, it's difficult. There are some communities that say they'll write into it that the main unit has to be owner occupied. But I will tell you that those communities that have that are going away from it because it's impossible to police. It just is. And given that it's Carolyn and I and the community development department and a couple of building inspectors, you know, we won't be, you know, following the rental laws to see if they're, the owners are occupying.
And is it 2,000 feet per floor?
No, he, Ken was using that as a hypothetical. We don't have any, we have no proposals for.
But can they stack, could it be 1,500 feet per floor, 4,500 altogether?
We look at percentages. So you're, and for a single family home, you're allowed to cover 35% of your lot.
So the answer to your question is yes. You could have a 1500 square foot basement, 1,500 main and 1,500 second floor, but you would still only be able to split that into two units. You would never be able to split it into three.
Right.
So much Danny and John, this is basically just a list, a heads up of things we're covering in more detail with a later date.
Yep. So the idea is that we'll, we'll take this list and then we'll develop some proposals that you can critique, you know, provide feedback on.
In our homework now is if we see anything or we don't see anything that we want to have addressed.
Yep. Yes. Because we don't want to be going back in two months from now and go, oh, but we forgot about this. We need to, we may, if we, you know, if that happens, that happens, but we'd. Like to stick to a list and check it off as we move along.
One other question, I saw in clearing what you're doing, you say eliminate the neighborhood commercial zone and revise the table of permitted uses.
So we have one neighborhood commercial zone and it's down on Sixth. It's the, there's a little barber shop. And we're not saying eliminate the barber shop. What we're doing is saying expand the list of home occupations, basically. Right now, for some reason, you can't run a beauty parlor out of your home. You know, a one, one chair beauty shop, you can't do.
That's, that's because of their, their rules.
Well, our city ordinance is some, some other neighborhoods may, you know, you may have CCRs that, that cover that as well and that's a whole nother deal, but.
But my point is that you have a development that's going to have a neighborhood commercial zone that you're in the process of developing now over by Walmart because it's thinking of putting grocery store or whatever. That's going to be.
That's not neighborhood commercial, that's, that's, they have general commercial along College Avenue and they may do.
No, I'm not talking about college, I'm talking about home, my home depot. That development that you, okay, it's going to put in grocery or other kinds of things and that would be a neighborhood commercial.
That would be, they went through a PUD process and it's, their land use and zoning is commercial. They have a overlaying PUD that, you know, has a grocery store and, and other, you know, shopping opportunity. Really it's kind of a glorified shopping center where it is. It's not, and there is, yeah, high density next to it. But it's, now, the neighborhood commercial is, is, is your corner, you know, drugstore, so to speak, the old, you know, where you would, the old day, you know, the, what we think of as, you know, 7-Eleven or something today, that where you used to see the mom and pop, they'd have a little, you know, or a beauty, beauty parlor, barber shop, things of that nature, so.
Back years ago, in senior year, there wasn't a beauty shop.
Yeah.
And that little grocery store is included in that on Eighth Street?
No, that's on the downtown, that's in the downtown mixed use. The only spot zone we have of this neighborhood commercial is on Sixth Street across from the tennis, across from Old Rogers site. And you can, there's a little sign out in this front yard and, you know, he got cut hair and it came about because our city ordinances didn't allow for him to operate a barber shop, so he applied to have a, a code change and to allow for these little neighborhood commercials. We're not trying to do away with that, we're just, it makes more sense to have an expanded use of what you can do in your home under.
Under the R75.
Right.
So on that, on that list, I'm not sure what a small cell regulation means or the blockchain regulations.
So.
Or site triangles.
Small cell video education. You not here?
I must have missed that.
Yeah, we did have a, we did, didn't we? Yes. To put it simply, the, the next network that the wireless communication, you know, your sprints, your pocket INets, your wireless communication providers is, is the 5G network. And, and it, the way it works is they're locating small antennas on, within public right of ways, generally on existing utility poles. They, they, the antennas don't have a long range like what you have on your, but they carry a greater bandwidth, so to speak, Randall, is that correct? So you can, you know, it's because our, that the users are demanding so much data, you know, we're watching videos when we're walking down the sidewalk or streaming music or. or streaming music or whatever.
I saw an article online about that. That's what it means?
And so we have to come up with standards to address those.
What's blockchain regulations?
That is like your Bitcoin. So again, it's one of those complicated. I don't completely understand how it turns into revenue for somebody. But anyhow, they are huge power users, huge.
Oh, yeah. If you're running a computer, my son's all into that. He thinks he's going to, going to mine Bitcoin. And it's like, yeah, no, not my, I'll
So there are communities that have had these operations set up in garages and they, you know, they're using so much energy that they cause a fire. Or one user could completely deplete our, our energy resources in College Place. We did, we have blackouts all the time. And it's just, so we need to have some stuff on the books to say, no, you cannot do that in our community.
And then site triangles, what's that?
Oh, that's, yeah, engineering related, your ability to see at an intersection where you're at a stop sign.
Yeah. You're coming up large to 12th Street on the left hand side to get them stupid rose bushes you can't see, right? Yeah, I get that. That irritates the crap out of me if you couldn't tell. You can't, well, now it doesn't matter because I got a stop sign. I really do like that, by the way. I've gone through that intersection a dozen times since we put that up. So, thank you.
Without stopping or?
No, I like the flashing red. That really helps.
When, when Paul Hartwig made the presentation to council, he said, I'm going to be the first one to run this thing because they're so used to, you know, just heading down 12th.
Well, the flashing does help. It helps you, I was actually going up 12th and, and it was the flash that caught my, my personal vision and made me remember to stop.
We've had, we have had a lot of people run it accidentally, but we have not had any accidents. So just when you're crossing 12th, pay attention still until people get used to stopping. Be cautious.
Well, I have a question as far as, I guess, schedule and what priority of this list? Is there like a timeframe? Do you think you're going to work the whole list? Or is there, is it a matter of months or a matter of a year?
We would hope, so next month, we're going to hold a public hearing for the comp plan. And I'm not going to ask you guys to make a recommendation at that meeting. You could if we don't get any public testimony and you feel comfortable with it. So that would mean you'd be making a decision in September. That decision would be forwarded on to council probably at a workshop first part of October. And then we'll be asking council to take action on October 9th. And so that would be done. So, so next month, I'm hoping that Greg will be prepared to at least make a presentation to some of these items. And we can have in-depth discussion about them. But I, we need to be through this
Open house, same as the next month planning commission?
Is what?
Either is the comp plan open house the same as the planning commission meeting?
It's not an open house. It's a public hearing.
Public hearing, okay. Is the public hearing thing, is the public hearing the same as will be
It's, you, you are conducting a public hearing. Yeah. Yeah. And so this fall, we would like to be through this, the development regulations and have something to council to adopt.
So this is separate from the comp plan then?
It's a follow-up to it. It relates to it because there's goals and policies. The development regs or implementation of what you have in your conference.
Right. Okay. That makes sense.
And that regulation is assigned, regulation also could be addressed at that time?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, that'll be, I think that should be in the list.
It is in the
Yeah.
Well, I don't have that. Sure.
What did the council people on that?
Well, they tabled it.
Threw it back.
But it was a shorter duration.
And we were going to bring it back to you after our attorney looked at the, you know, to make sure it was in compliance with the, the decisions that the Supreme Court had issued. And then we got into the comp plan stuff and we just decided that let's table it. There was an application that we had pending, that we still have pending that we haven't received the plans for. And, you know, we received the plans, but we haven't received an estimate for the cost. And so we still have not issued that permit. But
I don't mean discuss through this
Yeah.
Period.
Yep. So.
Give towards the mouth, the mouth one.
Yeah, seriously. If that can't, sign can't go up between now and when we finally adopt some regulations, I'm, I'm going to have to send it back soon because we've just had it for so long. I've sent repeated requests to please provide us with your estimate of the, the engineer's estimate of the cost.
That come out of the historic?
What's that?
I'm wondering, asking them, it comes under the historic.
Unfortunately, it was demolished during the cars project. So.
Any, any other business?
I don't think so. Not for me.
Your comments before we adjourn.
Can I, can I ask if, if anybody, if there's going to be anybody gone on the, on the 21st? August 21st.
People are be running
Yes.
All right.
It's 26th.
21st, I think it is.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.
7:57 on the screen.
Yeah. That's why I qualified.